Meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. Commissioners, do we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Mayor, who is away on work? Mayor Protem Hill?
I move that we excuse Commissioner Mayor for having an excused absence.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. We have an agenda. Do we have a motion on the agenda in front of us, Commissioners? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, motion to accept agenda is written.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Announcements. The only announcement I have is we are back to fully in-person meetings, which is very exciting. It's great to see folks in the audience. Thank you all for coming tonight. And now that we have moved back to in-person meetings, we may have some folks who wish to address us during the public comment section. We are also, for the time being, allowing written public comment. Because of the kind of ever-changing pandemic, some folks may or may not feel comfortable. That may change at a future date where we go back to just fully in-person only, but for now, we will have in-person comments first, and then we will have some written comments potentially from the City Clerk. Just wanted to announce that. All right, that does bring us to our public comment session. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. And do we have anyone for public comment this evening?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street, Marquette, Michigan. Let me start by saying, it's a genuine thrill to be back in this room, seeing people face-to-face. As much as you can do business over the computer and over the phone, nothing gets in the way of face-to-face meetings. It has been over a year and a half since this room was full of city people and city residents, and it's been very, very challenging. And I say that, and you're sitting to yourself saying, well, we've been doing all the work. And that's true. You've done a magnificent job of keeping the city going and making very tough decisions in the last year to shut things down and to avoid situations, to avoid problems. And if you think people didn't notice that, we did. It's just there was a lot going on for everybody last year. A lot of challenges happened last year. We're back now, and we're trying to get back to normal, and nobody knows what the new normal is, because we don't know what it's going to be. Every time I see an announcement in the paper for a sporting event or for an activity, I think yay, and then part of me is scared again. I went to the movies yesterday, and that was exciting. Lot of dancing, though. What I wanted to say to all of you is I paid attention in the last year and a half. I had to communicate verbally. I had to communicate in writing. I would much rather prefer to communicate in person, so I'm going to switch to that as fast as possible. Many times, I've communicated unofficial on your email addresses, so it was a matter of record, because I know if something happens on Facebook, it's not official. It's just there. But if somebody brings it to your attention on an email, then it's been communicated officially. I wanted to say one more thing about tonight. In case anybody takes you and your job you do for granted, this is tonight's agenda. It is 338 pages, four inches, give or take a few. And y'all are responsible for every word on every page for your jobs. So if there's anybody who thinks your job is easy, I would say, no, it's worse than it's ever been. And there's a lot of stuff in here that affects a lot of individuals in town, not just corporations and things like that. So I guess I'm here to say thank you for the good work you did in the last year and a half. I do reserve the right to comment on how it's done and in what way it's done, because that's my right and responsibility. But I don't take you for granted, and I'm glad you're all back. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, doesn't look like we have anyone else in person. Do we have any written public comments this evening? City Clerk?
We did have one written comment, Mayor, and it is from Paul Schlegel, 2030 Wright Street in the city. And he writes, "City manager, clerk, mayor, city commissioners, first off, I'd like to commend the commission's recent decision to accept the We Energies donation of Lake Shore property between the Dead River Outlet and the LSNI conveyor. Again, this shows the city's commitment to preserving even more public access to Lake Superior for residents and visitors to enjoy. I'm writing today to ask that the commission direct city staff to explore designating this specific space as the city's only off-leash dog-friendly beach. If not, its designation is Marquette's summertime dog park. Most of you are likely aware that Tours Park is Marquette's winter dog park, and it is heavily used during that timeframe. Marquette has over seven miles of publicly accessible shoreline. To date, dogs are not allowed on any of the public beaches, on or off-leash. Marquette residents expressed great interest in having designated a dog park. It's been listed as a priority for this community during past and recent surveys in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. It's also been highlighted in City of Marquette Master Plan. Our hope is that city staff sends a recommendation to the city commission to designate the property as a dog-friendly, off-leash Lake Superior access point. If so, myself, my wife Beth, our family, including our dog Izzy," see attached picture, "would be willing to help start a fundraising effort to help offset costs by donating $1,000 to this project. I'm sure needs will go far beyond that now, now minor, but our hope is that other community members will also contribute to this awesome opportunity. Fencing, signage, trash cans, and bag stations are only a few areas these funds will be needed. Thank you all for your time and consideration to this request. Respectfully, the Paul Schlegel family." And in the email, there was a photo of the dog. Those are the only eight written comments.
Thank you. All right, if we have no additional public comment, public comment is now closed. Brings us to our item number one. We've got a presentation by Andrea Ingmeyer with the Peter White Public Library. She is the library director. Thank you, Andrea, for joining us. So nice to have an in-person presentation.
It is so lovely to be here.
And I'll let you take it away.
Okay. So I have 10 minutes. I'm going to be talking really fast. Feel free to ask any questions later, if you have any. So the mission of the library, of course, is to enrich the community through access to library services and cultural opportunities, and we do that by having an amazing team. And that team includes all of the people in this room. Everyone is on our team. And I'll be talking a little bit about those different parts of the team. So City of Marquette, we were established by Peter White in 1871 by a special act of the Michigan legislation. We were later added as a part of the city charter, so we are a city library. We moved to our current location in 1904, and we are a millage-funded service. We have a 1.5 mil operating and a .5 approximately mil with regard to the bond. We also have several townships that we have contracts with. Those are all millage-funded service contracts, and those are Chocale, Marquette, Sands, Scandia, and West Branch. Those millages are voted on every two to four years. We do have a governing board, as well as an advisory council. The Peter White Public Library Board of Trustees is appointed by the city commission and the mayor. Those are all members of residents of the city. And then from our townships, we have a township advisory council, and those are made up of two people from each township, and those are appointed by the township boards. We have a number of staff. We have 38 currently on staff, 16 of those are full-time, and six departments at the library. We have a lot of volunteer groups that we work with. This is our used bookstore and some of the Friends, and I'm going to talk about the Friends, first of all. They are on track to donate to the library about $20,000 worth of programming and things like this beautiful mural in this fiscal year. It's pretty amazing. They do good work. They run a bookstore on the main floor of the library, and they also run any book sales that we have. We haven't had a book sale, of course, an in-person book sale in a couple of years now, but we do have one scheduled for September, September 22nd through 24th, and we're really looking forward to that. That book sale will be in conjunction with the AAUW, so we'll have a whole Front Street Book Fair. Our master gardeners are an amazing group of volunteers who come in and help the front of the library look amazing. They do really wonderful work, and they spend hours every year out there making sure the gardens look great. The Marquette Area Sister Cities Partnership, we work with that group in the Sister Cities Room. All of the past delegation gifts are housed at the library, or most of them anyway, and the group comes in and reorganizes and spiffs up for us every so often, and we have a great partnership with them. I also want to mention the Queen City Seed Library. That's a partnership that we've had now for about five years. And the Seed Library volunteers come in and take care of all the Seed Library stocking and publicity, and we just house the Seed Library. And we are so pleased that they're there. It's a wonderful asset to our community. I'll talk a little bit about our different departments. I won't read all these lists to you. You do have this link, so you can look back for future reference if you'd like to, but these are some of the services that we offer from the Adult Services Department. I will hit on a few of them. Digital resources have been really important in the past year, more important than ever. We did add several over the course of the last couple of years. Value Line, Canopy, and the New York Times are some of our most recent additions. We do have a local history research room that was added during the renovation. As we were moving things around, we kept finding little hidey holes with important local history materials, so we decided to put them all in one place and establish a room for those materials. The study rooms, we have three study rooms on the top floor of the library. Those are no reservation, three-hour-at-a-time use rooms, so people can come in and use the room. It's kind of a drop-in service. We did start a podcast in March of this year called Library Nerds With Words. If you haven't checked it out, please do so. It can be found on any place you find your podcasts. Marty Atches has been doing this for us, and it's a really fun podcast. We added a new scanner at the library. It's a scanner station. It does negatives and slide scanning. So if you have some old pictures that you need to digitize and pull out from the recesses of your drawers, we can help you out with that. We also have a new copier upstairs. And I would not be a librarian if I neglected to mention that we have new materials arriving weekly and physical materials that you can put in your hand, and we have many great views. Youth Services Department, this is a busy, busy department, and today is kickoff of summer reading. Summer reading kickoff started today. We'll go through Wednesday. Of course, kids can sign up all summer long, but it's been so wonderful to have the Youth Services Department feeling like normal again. It was quite busy at the library today. We've been doing a lot of program kits since the start of the pandemic, so these are kits that families can take home and do a library event at their house, and this is kind of the backside of what that looks like, all of the prep that goes into creating those kits. We also started a sensory bin program. It's kind of an extension of the program kit, and so kids are able to get an extension to their sensory bin on a regular basis. Just more things that we can do to help families. This is our setup for virtual storytime. We are doing some in-person events this summer, but we are going to continue to do virtual storytime for a while so that we can hit both groups of folks who need us. This is teen services. Again, a lot with the kits. We're finding that the teens aren't ready. They don't want to do anything to do with virtual. They want to be in-person, or they want to do stuff with their friends. So we are doing a lot of program kits with the teens, because they can take that and do the activities at home or with their friends. We are also focusing on diversity, inclusion, and just general kindness. We have a new kindness club at the library. This is our kindness tree. One of our staff members' daughters painted this on the wall at the library, and we're just looking at ways to build the community and build trust and bridges. TALK is a new early literacy program that was started by a library downstate. It's a way for parents to get reminders of literacy initiatives that they can do with their children. Folks who signed up for TALK will get eight to 10 reminders during the month of activities that they can do with their children. Some general services at the library, again, a listing of some of the things that we do. Curbside pickup is something we started during the pandemic, of course, and it's not going anywhere. We're going to keep it as long as it's being used, and we do find that we still have patrons who wish to pick up their materials via curbside rather than coming into the library. We still have the art prints for checkout and a library of things, and the library of things is more equipment-based, so we have a lot of things. We have telescopes, microscopes, Blu-ray players, cake pans. We're adding new things all the time. We also have several meeting rooms, and we are starting to open those meeting rooms up for public bookings, so not all of them are open quite yet, but we're opening them up all the time. We also have art in the library again, I am so happy to say. This is Elsa Clement, and she has her African Safari drawings up in the Huron Mountain Club gallery right now. They're really fabulous. We also have a call to artists out right now. We are accepting applications for the 2022 gallery season, so anyone who's an artist can submit their application there. Some things about funding. This is a snapshot of how the library is funded, and you will notice that it's primarily funded by local millage funding. But I'm always proud to say that 16% of our revenue comes from library-generated funds, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Here's another way of looking at our revenue sources. Again, you'll see that the tallest ones are the millages, but then also that fundraising piece is growing every year. And this is, again, a snapshot of our expenses. You'll notice that wages and staff benefits are the highest percentage of our expenditures. That is not abnormal for a library, or a school, or any other organization that relies so heavily on staff to perform the services that we offer. So I'd like to talk a little bit about funding stability, and Rick will step on my toes if I don't mention that our MERS pension is currently 70% funded, and he's very proud of that, so I want to make sure everybody knows that. But we also have a lot of endowments that have been set up for the library. Held on our library books are two endowments. One is the Carol Paul Trust, and that fund is used to sponsor music programming and music collections at the library. We take a $30,000 distribution from that fund every year. The general fund, we've been building for a number of years, and we'll be taking our first distribution from that this year of $5,000. We also have a development fund, and that is an officially established 501(c)(3), and that is not held on the library books. That also includes a number of endowment funds that are building as time goes on. It also houses the Friends of the Library, and the development fund takes care of all the fundraising for the library. So they are contributing about $135,000 to this year's budget, but then also we're building those endowment funds every year. Technology, as I said already, has been extremely important to our community this year. We were able to upgrade our parking lot Wi-Fi with some CARES Act funding, and that parking lot Wi-Fi was a lot of folks' Wi-Fi for a number of months when we were not open. So we had a number of people hanging out in the parking lot all the time, and they still do it, because our parking lot Wi-Fi is really fast, and it goes all the way out to the parking lot. We also upgraded a lot of computers when we were closed. It was a great time to take advantage of the fact that there weren't people in and update all those computers and make some server upgrades and some software upgrades as well. So looking ahead, some things that we have coming up. Our strategic plan expires in 2022, so this next fiscal year, we'll be working on our new strategic plan. Digitization and preservation, this is something you'll be hearing a lot more from the library. A couple of years ago, we digitized The Cloverlands, which is a travel, UP travel guide that came out in the early 1900s. We digitized that with the help of a donor, and it went into NMU archives. And that was kind of a test project for us, and it was very successful. And this donor wanted to talk to us about digitizing The Mining Journal, and we were very interested in this idea, but we had a really hard time finding a host for it, because digitizing and hosting, these big files are really, the hosting part is huge. And with Northern's archive grant that they received last year of $100,000, they're creating a service called Uplink, and we'll be able to house The Mining Journal digitization in Uplink. So we are really excited to get this project off the ground. We just ordered 19 to 1924, or something like in that range of microfilm, that will go off to digitization and then eventually will be loaded into Uplink when it's ready to go. So this is something you'll be hearing a lot more from us in the future. And I'm super excited to announce that we were also recently awarded a $20,000 National Endowment for the Arts Big Read Grant. We are one of five entities in the state of Michigan to get this grant, one of only three libraries in the state of Michigan to get the grant, and one of three entities in Michigan to get the full amount. So I'm really, really proud of this. The programming will start at the end of September, and will run through the middle of November, and we have a whole lot of really great programming coming up. And of course, it ends with a virtual reading from Joy Harjo, the author of An American Sunrise, which is the basis of our Big Read program. So that's all I have. Did I make it in 10 minutes? No? Oh, gosh, I was really trying. I just want to thank you all for your continued support of the library and encourage you to stop by for a visit.
Well, thank you, Andrea. I think the library is a place in the last year and a half that has really strengthened the community, which is difficult to do. It's a difficult time, and you and your staff have done a wonderful job. I know my own family, my four-year-old and my one-year-old have benefited from the books and the packs and the crafts. I, myself, have sat there and done city work in my truck in the parking lot using the Wi-Fi, and I really appreciate it. It is a community gathering place, even when you can't gather, and that took a lot of thought and planning and careful consideration, and I really appreciate the way you were able to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Other Commissioners? Mayor Protem Hill?
Thank you for your presentation, and I will say, my husband is on the library board and is thrilled to be a part, and I can speak to the incredible dedication as well of the staff and the good, hard work that they did. And I want to, in particular, recognize Rick for his work to bring the library to the financial stability that it has now. He is going to be retiring.
End of June, yeah.
Yeah, this month. And thanks to him, those numbers are as impressive as they are, and I just want to thank him publicly here today for all the good work that he has done, and please bring back our best wishes for his very well-deserved retirement.
I will do that. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Andrea, you know I can't say enough good things about the library. I just cannot say enough, having been in Marquette as long as I have and used that library as extensively as I have, and watched them being tested these last couple of years very heavily, as all of us were. But they came through certainly with flying colors. They continue to provide service to the city and the community, and that is just so critical for what we had gone through. Last year, I mentioned that a library is really just a pile of books and stone, but it takes a librarian to make it work and to make it come alive, and you have got the greatest collection of Jedi knights than I have ever seen. And please, if you have an opportunity, let them know that the commission feels very strongly, and I'm sure very positively, with everything they have done and continue to do. So thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, wow. No, you didn't do that in 10 minutes, and I can understand why. The depth and the breadth of the services and the resources at the library are something that is unparalleled. I mean, it's just always amazing to me, and I can't, what other Commissioners have said, I certainly agree with, but I know that none of that happens without leadership and dedication, and I'm so glad you came to Marquette to lead our library. I also know it depends greatly on the board and the staff. Thank you, Rick, for your services as the financial person. Just want to say thank you for all of that work. It's just amazing, the ingenuity that has been there and the level of services that we have, and not only keeping the building up. So also thank you volunteers who are doing the gardening and all the other things that are happening.
Commissioner Hanley?
I want to echo what all of the other Commissioners have said already. My son loved the book packs over the course of COVID, and it kept his sanity a little bit to get a little bit different. And the fact that you wrapped one of the books every time in wrapping paper was adorable and wonderful. The small, little touches like that, that your library staff did to keep kids' lives regular during COVID, when there was nothing regular about it, was really appreciated by a lot of families that I know of, and I want to say thank you for everything your staff has done through all of this.
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Andrea, and to everybody that works at the library. You know, the library was a huge part of my childhood and my youth growing up here in Marquette. I spent just about every day after school in middle school and high school at the library, often with my friends, including my current fiancee, and so that was a really great resource to have, and I'm really excited that we're getting somewhat back to normal and being able to provide local youth with those services. somewhat back to normal and being able to provide local youth with those services because ultimately, I think in last year's presentation, I believe it was noted that actually people under the age of 25 are the most likely age demographic to utilize public libraries. And that was kind of surprising to me, but it makes sense when you really think about it. So thank you so much for everything you're doing and please continue. I also just want to note that, you know, I think that the Wi-Fi service is really underutilized and a lot of people don't realize how important that service is for so many city residents. And I think it maybe speaks to a need for more access to public Wi-Fi in the city of Marquette, which I know we've discussed in some of our strategic planning sessions. So thank you for highlighting that as well.
You're welcome.
Thanks again, Andrea.
Sure thing.
Thank you. We'll be hearing from you again soon. Okay, moving on to item number two in our agenda, we have a public hearing for the conditional rezoning of 616 Fisher Street. This does require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 4th, 2021 for the consideration of conditionally rezoning the property at 616 Fisher Street for medium-density residential, MDR, to be zoned mixed use with conditional rezoning, M-U-C-R. Pursuant to the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, Public Act 110 of 2006 has amended Section 125.3405, quote, "An owner of land may voluntarily offer in writing and the local unit of government may approve certain use and development of the land as a condition to a rezoning of the land or an amendment to a zoning map." The following motion was made. It was moved by S. Middlefelt, seconded by A. Andres, and carried 4-0 that after conducting a public hearing and review of the application and staff report analysis for 02-REZ-05-21, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed rezoning with conditions is consistent with the community master plan and meets the requirements of the Land Development Code, Section 54.1405, and hereby recommends that the City Commission approve 02-REZ-05-21 with the following conditions. That, one, the proposed conditional rezoning is contingent upon retaining all land uses, permitted and special uses, allowed in the medium-density residential district and the permitted uses in the mixed-use district that have been identified by the applicant; and that special land uses for the mixed-use district be confined to accessory use, non-single-family home, bed and breakfast, bed and breakfast-in, child or daycare group home, domestic violence center, intentional community dwelling, accessory dwelling unit, foster-family group home, and rooming house; and, two, that six-foot fencing in the rear yard will be repaired and maintained; and, three, that all socializing by residents and staff happens in the rear yard; and, four, that resident capacity meets the requirements set by the fire department. Yes, A. Andres, M. Dunn, M. Larson, S. Middlefelt, and no, no votes. Under procedures in accordance with Section 54.1405 of the Land Development Code, the Planning Commission is offering the recommended amendments to the City Commission for final approval. A hearing has been scheduled in accordance with this section of the Land Development Code and will now be conducted. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, approve the conditional rezoning of the subject property at 616 Fisher Street to mixed use with conditional rezoning as recommended by the Planning Commission and in compliance with the Land Development Code, Section 54.1405. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. All right, we will go ahead and open the public hearing now. Members of the public wishing to make a comment about this public hearing do have three minutes to do so. Please approach the podium and state your name and physical address. Do we have anyone wishing to speak for this public hearing? Go ahead and come up to the podium, name and physical address, please.
My name is Ryan Redman and I live at 610 West Berg Avenue here in Marquette. We had the initial fire inspection today with Tom Dunn Levy and Inspector Anderson and everything was up to snuff. There was a few minor things that we have to do, some light covers and the list is right here. It's not very extensive and very doable and we plan to do that ASAP. So thank you and we appreciate all that the city does for us.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment or public hearing? You've got three minutes to speak if you wish to do so. Okay, seeing no one else for public hearing, the public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Hanley?
I motion that we approve the conditional rezoning of the subject property at 616 Fisher Street to mixed use with conditional rezoning as recommended by the Planning Commission and in compliance with the Land Development Code, Section 54.1405.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I will second that motion.
Commissioner Hanley, any discussion? Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I would like to acknowledge the Planning Commission in their work on this particular item. Ms. Brum mentioned the 338 pages that are in our agenda and several of them were there detailing the conversations and the in-depth concern and discussion that the Planning Commission had in this and I really appreciate them adding the conditional, the conditions to the rezoning and just want to say thank you, Planning Commission, for all of the work that you did with this.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Banzel?
Yeah, I would just echo what Commissioner Davis said. Whoever writes the minutes for the Planning Commission meetings is incredibly good at that.
Fair service.
Okay, all right. Well, anyway, that's really, really good. So it's very helpful as a commissioner as we were studying this issue and I think it's incredibly important that we're offering permanent supportive housing solutions to those people in our community that need them and we need to continue supporting this organization and filling that largely unmet need in our community. So that's all I have to say about this.
Other commissioners? Anything to add? All right, hearing no additional discussion. City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Commissioner Banzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes 6-0. Moving on to item number three, we have the consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Banzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And do we have a second? Oh, I couldn't see your hand. Commissioner Davis? Are you raising your hand? Maybe you weren't. Oh. Would you like to second our consent?
But I will second that motion.
Thank you. And any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Onto new business, we have a first, the, first is item number four, but first on new business, appointment of city treasurer. City Clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Last month, the City Commission confirmed the appointment of Treasurer Mary Schlitt to the position of the city's Director of Financial Services. This appointment created a vacancy in the position of city treasurer and the city manager has appointed current Deputy Treasurer Tara Barman to fill the role effective July 1st, 2021. Ms. Barman has worked for the city for 10 years, starting as a clerk and cashier in the Finance Department before transitioning to the Accounts Payable Clerk and most recently, Deputy Treasurer. Tara has a bachelor's degree in accounting and corporate finance from Northern Michigan University and is a member of the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association. In her time with the city, Tara has prepared the city's tax role and has significant experience working with city tax increment financing accounts, including those associated with the Local Development Finance Authority and the Marquette-Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. She has also processed revenues and expenditures and has training in the city's payroll system. Tara's diverse background through various positions with the city, along with her education, present a unique skill set. She's demonstrated a strong ability to work well with city staff as well as the general public. The city treasurer is considered an administrative officer under Section 5-1 of the Marquette City Charter, which states that officers, quote, "shall be appointed by the city manager for an indefinite period, subject to confirmation by the City Commission." Fiscal effect, the salary for the city treasurer is included in the budget. Recommendation, confirm the city manager's appointment of Tara Barman as city treasurer effective July 1st, 2021. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to confirm the city manager's appointment of Tara Barman as the city treasurer effective July 1, 2021.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Banzel?
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
Well, I think she's extremely well-qualified and will do a wonderful job for the city.
Commissioner Banzel, anything to add?
No, I completely agree.
Any other commissioners? Just want to say congratulations to Tara and preemptively, I understand. Let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. I'm assuming that's Tara on the back. Congratulations. All right, item number five, we have resolution accepting MNRTF Kids Cove Grant Agreement, which will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. At the March 30th, 2020 regular meeting, the City Commission approved the submission of a national, Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application for the replacement of Kids Cove at Mattson Lower Harbor Park with an accessible inclusive playground. That application was successful and the Michigan Department of Natural Resources has issued the city a grant agreement. The agreement outlines the timetable for completion, May 7th, 2021 through May 31st, 2023. It also outlines the scope of the project and the procedures and processes city staff follow through the completion of the project. Sanders and Chapsky Associates has been awarded the design bid for the project. The playground is planned to be constructed spring, summer of 2022. Fiscal effect, the city will realize $300,000 in revenue toward the project expenses reimbursable after project completion. All expenses are included in the current budget. Recommendation, approve the resolution of acceptance for the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Agreement TF20-0199. Authorize mayor and clerk to sign the resolution and authorize the city manager or her designee to sign the grant agreement. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, I will ask for a motion. We do have city staff here. I know there were some questions during agenda review prior to this meeting and it may be a good time once we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to approve the resolution of acceptance for the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Agreement TF20-0199, authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution and authorize the city manager of her or his designee to sign the grant agreement.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Hanley?
I second that.
And Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion or questions for staff?
I don't believe it's necessary to have any further discussion, Your Honor. We've worked this issue for some months. I have no questions of the staff.
Commissioner Hanley?
I have no questions. I'm very happy with the way that this has gone through and the work that all the different groups have gone to take to raise the money to make this grant happen and I'm very excited to see this playground come to its fruition.
Absolutely. Other commissioners? Any discussion or questions at this point? I guess I would just like to ask them, maybe it was just me, if we could, for the benefit of the public, an update on the timeline of the project. I've been getting a lot of questions from the public. I'm looking at John Swenson, Director of Community Services over here. Thank you, John.
Sure, Your Honor. So right now, the project is in the planning phase. We've had public input sessions and the design team is working to incorporate that public input into the design process. That design will come back to us in a draft form with an opportunity for review before being formalized and then we'll bid out the construction of it. So the goal is to start the project construction as soon as the spring thaw allows next season, so.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the update. All right, well, looking forward to that project whenever it does come through. Let's go ahead and take a, actually, we need a roll call vote. City Clerk, if you could please conduct that for us.
Commissioner Banzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven, oh, sorry, motion passes 6-0. And last on new business, we have item number six, short-term rental resolution. This also will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Thank you. Background, the Marquette City Commission passed an ordinance regulating short-term rentals in 2017. Since that time, the city has enforced local control to place reasonable regulations on short-term rentals to ensure they are balancing the needs of long-term residents and those of visitors to the community. House Bill 4722 and Senate Bill 446 seek to prohibit local communities from imposing certain regulations on homeowners wishing to convert their properties into short-term vacation rentals. These bills remove control from the entities best suited to determine the needs of their communities. The city of Marquette has been asked to pass a resolution in opposition to these bills. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, approve the resolution opposing House Bill 4722 and Senate Bill 446 and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. I couldn't get to the page fast enough. I forgot that there was also a background. Would you also mind to read the resolution, please?
Yes, I can absolutely do that. I'm just pulling it up one second. I swear, there it is. Resolution opposing short-term rental legislation, whereas the city of Marquette receives a substantial amount of visitors and tourists requiring a range of lodging options, and whereas the city of Marquette works to protect and enhance its residential neighborhoods while balancing the needs and wants of visitors, and whereas the city commission adopted an ordinance regulating short-term rentals in 2017 to protect the interests and quality of life for residents and businesses, and whereas the city of Marquette believes that local governments are best positioned to know the unique needs of a community and determine the delicate balance between residential and commercial uses and between residents and investment property owners, and whereas Senate Bill 446 and House Bill 4722 would eliminate the ability of local governments to regulate short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. Now therefore be it resolved, the Marquette City Commission, in an effort to help retain local control over the ability of local governments to regulate the short-term rental of residential properties, opposes Senate Bill 446 and House Bill 4722 and urges its representatives to do the same, dated this 14th day of June, 2021, and signed by Jennifer A. Smith, Mayor, City of Marquette.
Thank you, City Clerk, I appreciate it. All right, commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Banzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the resolution opposing House Bill 4722 and Senate Bill 446 and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
And do we have a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion, Commissioner Banzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, we don't often pass resolutions like this opposing specific pieces of legislation, but sometimes a piece of legislation comes along that is just so uniquely terrible that it merits a resolution like this. And this is one, these two bills are legislation like that. I mean, just so the public knows, essentially what these bills would do if they were passed and signed into law is bar the city of Marquette and all other municipalities from limiting the number of short-term rentals in the community. We currently have a cap of 250 and we are at that cap. It would prohibit any other forms of regulation on density of short-term rentals. It would effectively bar us from even inspecting short-term rentals and it would potentially create loopholes that could empower slum lords. There are so, and ultimately, what we know about the city of Marquette is that the vast majority of short-term rentals could potentially otherwise be long-term rentals. And so if we allow unchecked proliferation of short-term rentals in Marquette, and we've seen this happen in many other communities, both large and small, your long-term rental stock, especially smaller, more modest, more affordable units are going to get eaten up just because of simple economic incentives that landlords will face. So this legislation absolutely cannot pass. It would be terrible and I'm glad that we're doing one small thing at least to oppose it.
Commissioner Stonehouse, anything to add?
Your Honor, just a couple of quick points if I can. The big push, the big agency, the group that's forcing the issue with the rental program, as Commissioner Banzel mentioned, really is the Realtors Union. That's the association that's behind it with the money. That's the dark money they don't talk about and that really is very shameful, I think. And if you know a Realtor, I would ask them the very hard question, why is your association trying to destroy cities in Michigan, particularly cities like Marquette? Because that flat out is what they are attempting to do. City of Marquette, about 54% of all of our homes are rental homes. A great majority of that is driven by the university and their market for that. But what you're finding happening, what you're seeing across the state where they have not had any attempt at local control, is outside folks coming in, buying the home, buying the house, and then using it as a constant short-term rental throughout the year. And you might argue, well, that's their constitutional right to do so. The courts would certainly determine whether that is or is not. But the result for the community, for the city, is that all of a sudden, you don't have any actual people. You don't have real residents that are living in the city anymore. They're gone. They've been forced out by this type of a rental program. So when you ask the question, who's living in the city, who's a Marquette resident, who's a Marquette voter, who is vested in the community, they're being forced out or would be forced out under this legislation. And that's occurring again across the state where communities have not had the foresight to put these types of programs. to put these types of programs into play. So I think it's extraordinarily important we understand that. The other thing, Your Honor, I would ask is that it's been quite an honor, I think, to have our mayor, Protem, down in front of the legislature testifying in favor of this. And if she has a few words, just to give her input to it, I think it would be good.
Absolutely. Protem, go ahead.
Thank you. I actually didn't testify to the legislature today. Sorry for that misunderstanding. I was part of a press conference this morning at 10:00 AM with the city manager of Grand Rapids and the city manager and a short term rental owner in Frankenmuth. So we had a city the size of Grand Rapids, Marquette, and then Frankenmuth, which is only 5,000 people, but has millions of visitors a year, if you've been downstate. And, no, they work hard to have a reputation for hospitality, and yet they have regulated or managed their short term rental program. The Michigan Municipal League organized the press conference. Not one municipality or village in Michigan is seeking to ban short term rentals. What we do is regulate and manage it to balance these, this kind of travel opportunity and rental opportunity with the other kinds of rental opportunities there are. And so, this idea that someone is, there's actually, in all, they did research, there's only one township, and there are 1,200 townships in Michigan, that has a ban at this time. So, this is the state legislature coming down on an issue that actually doesn't exist. And to Commissioner Stonehouse's point, there are other entities who are seeing this as an opportunity for their interests to prevail over the community wealth building and placemaking that we have here, to have a thriving community, and they would take away that right. And in particular, I want to point out two things that staff did a great job helping identify. City of Marquette started talking about its policies for short term rentals in January 2017. That was our first hearing, and it was a work session. And they went and on and met over the course of months with opportunities for public input to talk about this and figure out what would work for us. And then a year later, after passing it in 2017, in 2018, we came back to it and actually revised it. So, we have been thinking about this. The local governing body has made decisions for ourselves, and our problem with this very bad bill, as Commissioner Bonzal said, is that it takes away all of our ability to do that. So I was honored to be part of this group, and there's great concern across the entire state of taking away the right to manage our local housing at this very, very critical time, when housing costs are just going through the roof.
Well said, Protem. Other commissioners? I would just like to add to what my colleagues here have said. You know, many of us have traveled out, I don't know if a lot of people here have used a VRBO in other places, but if you've kind of been around and done those things, you can tell when a community gets it right and when a community maybe doesn't. And I've been in both, and I don't want to be one of those communities that doesn't get it right. We've got a chance here to try to state our feelings, state our mind or point of view on this, and try to keep our local control on this topic. I would agree with Commissioner Bonzal, we don't typically support or kind of go against legislation. It's not a common thing here, we are a nonpartisan body, but this is something that impacts us here in our local government, and we think we should be able to make those determinations here. And honestly, I think it's been going pretty well so far. So, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote on this, and I hope that our legislators are listening. City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes six zero. All right, that brings us to our second public comment session of the evening. Again, we will allow public in the audience to come up and speak for three minutes in person. Please clearly state your name and physical address, and then, once that's complete, we will see if we have any additional written comments.
Margaret Rum, 404 East Magnetic Street. Once again, 338 pages, and you did it in under an hour. And the last time you got together, I don't, I think it was under 100 pages, and it was like two hours and 49 minutes, and you had to stop by nine o'clock, so you can never tell. Couple more things I wanted to say. My compliments to your city clerk for last meeting, when he had to sort through over 200 different emails, not just by, from residents or non-residents, but also quite appropriately sorted them into handwritten emails versus form letters. I think that was a critical piece of information for the decision makers to have, and I know that two commissioners, Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Stonehouse, mentioned during the discussion how many emails had come from non-residents and how many were in form letters. So, we take our city employees for granted, and we shouldn't, because the city clerk last meeting, I was listening to it, and it was, I could hear the pain in his voice, and he just kept going and going and going and going, and it was useful. I want to welcome the city manager, Karen Kovacs, to the city of Marquette. You're not seeing us as we are normally, because you're seeing the new normal. Anytime you'd like to go for a walk, or anytime you'd like to get together and hear a little perspective on the city, my family's been in this town for 96 years, and I am, been participating in these meetings from this podium for four years, more or less. In the last two weeks, I've written at least four emails to every member of the commission and the city manager. I want you to know those were not form emails. Those did not come from a kit, and no one, no one told me to write those emails. When you get an email from me, it's from me. I appreciate that sometimes you would rather not see what I'm telling you, because I can't always tell you good news. When I can tell you good news, I will. But I recently encountered a situation with the city where I fell on city property, and I found out I had no recourse against the city, because they had no knowledge there was a problem with where I fell. So I took away from that experience that I have to make sure that the city is aware of a situation. And by being aware, I have to copy you and make sure that it's documented that you were told, and that's where it's coming from. And if you think you're going to get four emails every two weeks from me, I hope not, because that would mean there's a lot more going on than you would think. In the meantime, if anybody wants to ask why I'm currently wearing a "Give a Hoot, Don't Pollute" T-shirt, they'll be on Facebook in the next week or so. There's going to be some local work involved in that, because our city is too pretty to let the barbarian horde destroy it. So I'm going to be doing something about that. But again, welcome to city manager, and congratulations to city clerk, you earned your pay. Thank you.
Anyone else for a public comment? And do we have any written public comments for the second session?
No.
All right, public comment is now closed. Brings us to comments from the commission. We will start things off with Commissioner Hanley, and then go down the line alphabetically.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to start by talking about fireworks. We've been very lucky in the city that we had a couple groups of people that came together and managed to pull together a Fourth of July celebration for us. We have a group working on the parade, and we have a group that's working on the fireworks, and one of the main things that they need right now is funding. In order to put on our fireworks, we had to pay half of it. It was in 2019, because 2020 was canceled, but we still need to raise the rest of it. And we need to raise more than that, because we will need to put a down payment in October on next year's fireworks, to make sure we can keep the same date. So, right now, we do have a benefactor that is matching all donations made online between June 14th and June 20th. So if you can go online to marquettefireworks.com and make a donation to the fireworks, your donation will be doubled by this benefactor. So, please consider donating and helping to fund the fireworks, so that we can continue to have the celebrations that we like to have. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Thank you. And I have a couple, as we are reopening, I have a couple of announcements about community events that are going to be happening between now and the next commission meeting. The farmer's market is going to be open on Wednesday afternoons now, from 5:00 to 7:00. So come and enjoy the market, and there's going to be arts performances at every one of those markets, I believe, so that should be a lot of fun. And hopefully, they'll have as beautiful a night as we have tonight for that, again, 5:00 to 7:00 down at the farmer's market area. And coming up, we have Art Week again, and boy, is that going to be a blast. They have a lot of great stuff organized. Folks have been sort of pent up at home, right? And there's some, lots of great activities going on. So check the website, but come down that last week of June downtown Third Street, there's going to be a lot of wonderful things going on. And in particular, I wanted to call out on June 26th, there's going to be the Ride with Pride. June is National Pride Month, celebrating our LGBTQ+ communities, and wanting to honor and celebrate all of our residents in all forms and all loves. And so, this year, they have organized a Ride, they're calling it. You can decorate your car, you can decorate your bicycle. They're going to start at 4:00 at the NMUP, the Physical Education Building at Third and Fair. And it should be a lot, a lot, a lot of fun. And if you want to know more, go to uprainbowpride.org. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, welcome to our new manager. Let me just talk about something that's happening on the 25th of June, which really is a nice historic moment in the city of Marquette. They're changing command at the Coast Guard Station. In other words, the old commander is being replaced by the new commander. It's an event that happens about every three years, maybe four years, based on their turn or the length of their tour. That's important for all of us, because it really is a very strong link to the maritime past of the city of Marquette. That station has been there for 130 years. And throughout the history of that 130-year-old station, that change of command, that formal passing of the flag, of passing responsibility from the outgoing chief to the new incoming chief, has been a constant in the city. The beat of the city has always included that. That original station that's still standing on the Lighthouse Park grounds is an 1880, excuse me, 1891 building. That was the original station for the Life Saving Service in Marquette when they came, and of course, became Coast Guard in 1915 through an amalgamation of a couple of different federal agencies. It's not a public ceremony, though it is public. And it just marks, again, the continuing beat of Marquette, and how people feel about keeping that organization here, and the importance that it plays really in our daily lives, so we may not always know that. If you're out fishing, and you got the guy in the red boat pull you over to check your life jackets and to check your boat, make sure you've got the safety equipment, you get a little irritated sometimes. Why are they doing this to me? But the value that's there in saving your life and the lives of the people that may have to come after you is really very important. And when you remember back to the original motto of the old Life Saving Service, regulations say we have to go out. They don't say we have to come back. So look at those guys in the red boats just a little bit differently, and understand the tremendous value that they give the city of Marquette. You know, it's not like you're fooling around with the county sheriff's float unit or something. These are real mariners, real sailors with real capability. So, just think about that a little bit as that date comes up. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I do just want to thank our new city manager, Karen Kovacs. I've been very impressed so far this first week on the job. And also want to thank Kyle, as was noted during the public comment, that was a pretty Herculean effort. And really, throughout the whole pandemic, Kyle, sort of more so than maybe anybody else in this room, has been the voice of the people, you know, reporting to us their opinions, and some positive, many negative, but all of them welcome. And he's received many compliments, I know, on how well he does that. So, thank you for doing that, not just at the last meeting, where it was most apparent, but throughout this whole process, and continuing to do it tonight. I just want, you know, I've been kind of struck the last week or two by just the strength of civic institutions and the potential of civic engagement in our community. Everything from, you know, Art Week, which is coming up June 21st through the 27th, the Ride of Pride event that was being organized on the 26th, the fact that we're having the fireworks and Food Fest and the Fourth of July Parade, all on such short notice, because so many people in our community have stepped up. It's really inspiring. So I just want to thank everybody for doing that, and also make a couple of additional asks of people in the community. So, there, I know, at the beginning of the meeting, if you're watching online, you might have seen that there are a lot of vacancies. I counted 27 vacancies on appointed city boards and committees. So if you would consider applying for one of those vacancies for a board that interests you, please do consider doing that, and feel free to reach out to myself or just about any other member of the commission, because most of us, at the very least, have served on at least one at some point in the past, and it can be very rewarding. And then, finally, I just wanted to note, I think you either should have already received or will be receiving soon one of these stickers in the mail with, I think, the utility bill. Is that correct?
It should be, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so it should be coming in the mail with your utility bill. And I think this will really help us meet some of the needs and the challenges that we've had with recycling glass in the city of Marquette over the last few months. So please do keep an eye out for that. And please, you know, either refer to this sticker that'll be coming in the mail, or check the city website for information on glass recycling. The next glass-only recycling week will be July 5th through the 9th. And then the last thing I want to note real quick is that for the last year and a half, I've served as the chairperson of the Ad Hoc Housing Committee, which was created by the city commission in January of 2020 to address the housing affordability challenges that our community is facing. And we held our final meeting on June 8th. Our committee will actually dissolve at the end of this month, and we unanimously approved on an eight-zero vote our final report and recommendations to the city commission. And those, I've been told, are now, as of this evening, public, posted on the city of Marquette website. You should be able to find them just by going to the homepage, marquettemi.gov, scrolling down a little bit, and you should see a link that will take you there. So I would encourage all residents of Marquette to also review that final report, and I'm looking forward to continuing to make progress on housing affordability in the coming months and years. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I also want to welcome our new city manager, although you're not new anymore, it's been a week. But Karen, I am really looking forward to several successes in your career in the next several years, and that Marquette can be the benefactor of those, so I'm looking forward to all of that. To the community, it's Flag Day today, and that commemorates the adoption of the American flag, and it's been there since 1777, when Congress approved Flag Day. There was a wonderful display of flags at Harlow Park today, and I hope everyone saw it, but thank you so much to the American Legion for putting up that display. And also, tomorrow is Arbor Day, and within those 338 pages, some of us had to read a resolution and approve a resolution for Arbor Day. And dear, tomorrow, our city manager is going to plant a new tree, because that's what Arbor Day is all about, and it's going to be at a very beloved location. It's going to be in front of Froxy Treats on Third Street. So you can watch, I don't know what time is that, Karen? Oh, 10:00, tomorrow morning at 10:00. Go watch her plant a tree. And finally, it's, John Swenson is here. It's really heartwarming for me to see the work on Hurley Playground starting up again. You know, although the community raised the funds, it's still, we need to rely on the city staff time and their talent to get that up and running. And thank you so much for the work that the city staff, John, Eric, those of you who are really involved in getting that playground going. It will be really wonderful to have a safe and fun place for the kids to play in this summer, especially while their family members are playing softball. So thank you.
Well, I'd just like to echo a couple of the commissioners. Welcome to Karen Kovacs, our new city manager. We're thrilled to have you onboard. We're on day six, and it's going fantastic so far, so keep up the great work. And I just wanted to address the one comment we had from Paul Schlegel, who was a former commissioner, about the dog-friendly beach. I know during our strategic planning, a dog park had come up, so we did have some recent conversations about maybe a dog-friendly beach, possibly at this location, possibly elsewhere. I think that's something that staff will be looking into, and maybe we'll be talking a little more with the strategic planning process, whether we want that to be a designated dog park or a beach, and we'll let staff do the legwork on that, thank you. But more conversations to come, and I just wanted to say thank you to Paul and his family for offering to potentially donate up to $1,000, if that is something we wanted to do in the future. That's very generous of you and your family, and especially Izzy, they're adored.
That's very generous of you and your family, and especially Izzy, their adorable yellow lab. I know we didn't get to see the picture, but I've seen Izzy. And then, you know, just finally, I wanted to say how glad I am to be back at in-person meetings. The last 14-plus months have been interesting, to say the least, trying to do things on Zoom, and I know staff has worked really hard to make that happen. It's great to be back. I'm feeling a collective sigh of relief in Marquette for this and just about everything. I'm sure I'm not the only one. You can actually go places and see people you haven't seen in a year and a half, and things really do seem to be getting better. I know, you know, maybe six, eight months ago, we kept saying there's going to be a light at the end of the tunnel, and I feel like we're finally seeing it, and it feels really good. I wanted to give a big kudos to the city manager's office, especially Sean and Wendy, who've helped us with the transition over the last several months, to all of city staff, to the department heads, who've done an incredible load of work over the last year and a half, and to the boards and committees who've been meeting on Zoom this whole time and are now finally, I think next month, going to be able to start coming back in person, to all of our city staff, who has really dedicated a lot of their time and energy, and then also to each Commissioner for doing your part in helping us get through this really difficult time, a historic time. I don't think we're going to forget this anytime soon, and we have a lot to be proud of. So I just wanted to kind of pause and take a moment. It feels like this is a natural, kind of like a breaking point. We're kind of breaking loose with some of the COVID restrictions, and it feels really good. We're quite resilient, and it shows. Thank you all. So now, that brings us to our very first comments from our new city manager, Ms. Karen Kovacs. If you have anything you wanted to inform the public or the commission of, now is a good time to do so, but if you don't, that's fine as well.
Well, I just want to say thank you for the warm welcome from the Commissioners and from, obviously, the department heads and staff, and it's been a smooth transition, very much thanks to Sean and Wendy in the city manager's office. And thank you to all the residents and business owners that have stopped me on the streets or mid-dinner or, you know, in the grocery store. It's been wonderful. The warm welcome has really helped with the transition from downstate all the way up to the UP, so I certainly appreciate that. And I came at a good time. You guys have a good thing going, some things are really moving here, and although this was a light agenda, there's a lot happening in the back, and this is a really great time to be a part of it. So thank you so much for this opportunity. And I think that Mike's words to me publicly, I think, were, "Don't screw it up."
I got plans, he said.
So how'd the first week go? You know, it was a -- they waited till Friday for a curveball, maybe, but no. And so I really look forward to not screwing it up, hopefully. But that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are adjourned at 7:07 PM. Thank you all.
Way to run it, Jenna.
Thanks. Victor Ross.